Have you heard anything? I never knew. No one ever told me. Am I ever seen a faculty meeting after half of her survey thing? I didn't fully understand it, but they jumped in. They came through directly here by the secretary's door and they got to see it directly through here. And I was like, "I'm sorry." They asked for a whole question here for everything. Instead, they just have me charged. It's true. And when I asked them about decorations, they just said, "Fine." And then I just said, "Once again, this is being a major championship." But no, no rationale there. No proof that their responses were unobvious. And if your response was constituted of documents, I would have had to ask her to give it out. So now, here I am. A monitor showing the state to the council. Go back to the house. I do not want my girls to go on. I'm sure I don't, I don't think that they know many of your students are here. But because we submitted like a couple of questions. So what am I asking now? Can you come into a classroom with a job that I love? And I'm so pleased. Right. I have to write this down. I need to see this. I know that's not. And according to the school board, you're also a teacher. So I think that will happen only to teachers and students. Thank you for letting me share my story again. Thank you for listening to our Washington speech. Why say teachers and teachers? Teachers! Our next two speakers are going to be the two on CNN. The Washington teaching meeting has endorsed this general election. And we're watching it right now for the fourth council. We're looking at three of them. We're going to talk about them right now. We're going to keep going, guys. We're saying more about the case than we want.
Good afternoon! Good afternoon! It is so great to be with you here today. Exercising our First Amendment rights to protest. My name is Randy Downs, and I'm advisory neighborhood commissioner in Dupont Circle. And I'm also running to be the War Two Council member. We are here today because we want to say in how our schools are reopened for in-person learning during this pandemic. There is a hearing right now where council members are questioning DCPS about their plan. But they won't let people who are directly affected be part of that conversation. Students, parents, and teachers need to have their voices heard. And they have to be part of the serious conversation. I'm standing here with you today to make sure your voices are heard. And I'm here because DCPS fired the beloved principal of School Without Falls at Francis Stevens. With no explanation. Every day for over two weeks, we have been calling for answers from DCPS officials as to why Principal Trogge was fired. And if their schools, our schools, are safe for in-person learning, yet no one has answered us. So today, we are calling for Principal Trogge to be immediately reinstated. We are also calling for a full, independent assessment of schools to ensure a safe environment for students, parents, and teachers. We want answers, and we need to call upon DCPS and council for action. And so, I want you to call your council members, call our War Two Council members, and fire that large council member to demand action so that our students, our teachers, our parents can remain safe. All right. Re-inscape rich!
Re-inscape rich! Re-inscape rich! Re-inscape rich!
All right, thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Isaac Alontar, and I am running to represent DC families on the State Board of Education at law. It's an honor to be here with DC families, with teachers, with school staff, and with students. And I want to tell you, I know that there are a lot of questions. And I have a singular answer for you. Dismantle mayoral control. The criminality of decision-making must come to an end before we put more children at risk. Mayoral control is responsible for the loss of millions of beloved teachers and principals throughout Washington DC. Mayoral control is behind the chronic underhunting of schools' Easter addresses. The schools of Ward Seven and Ward Eight have only seen 50% of modernization, while schools of Ward Three have 100%. The day is ours. And the council and mayor have shown you through your faces, your voices mean nothing to them. They have planned hearings, sessions, reopening plans without even engaging you meaningfully. They have lied to your faces. And the only way we can put DC families at the driver's seat of our public education system is to put those who are experts in control. The mayor is not an educational expert. You are not educational experts on the DC council. And for generations, they have left our children to suffer. The day is ours. And I am here to stand with you as a constant fearless advocate from now until the last of my breath to ensure that every system that is soaked in racism, that is inequitable to our students, is dismantled. We shall start with mayoral control. Bowser, it is time to say goodbye.
Thank you so much. We are so looking forward to when you both get elected as well as all the other candidates who have come and joined us today. Really appreciate it. Our next speakers are teachers. We have Jeff Kennedy, Kennedy, Katie Martin, and Robert Herman. Sorry, I don't know the reason. I'm not supporting the spending.
How are you? How are you? How are you? My name is Jeff Kennedy. I'm a 29, 30-year teacher in the District of Columbia Public Schools. I am a native of Washington DC, as you can see with my additionist shirt, with McKinley and Blue High School. I used to work here as Councilmember Rolex Legislative Assistant Agent for 25. The city council tried to put me in charge of DC public schools on a emergency code trustee board before I was 32 years old. Washington Post and the city paper both said I belonged on the DC school board. I am an expert in education across the country. I am now the project director for the Re-Record Project for Justice. For the last 15, 20 years, I've been trying to explain to my former colleagues at the DC City Council how they placed your children in harm's way. This is just another example of the DC City Council and the mayor, Mayor Control, placing your children and your lives in harm's way. This is just another example for the last 15 years of the mayor and the DC City Council placing yourselves, your children, and your lives in harm's way. And you have to ask yourself, when is it going to get? And that is going each one of us. That is going each one of us. You showed up here because you're taking care of yourself, you're taking care of your school, community, you're taking care of your children. And I know as an early childhood teacher, you deeply love those children. I don't have to ask teachers that. I witnessed this over 30 years myself. And it's a deep compassion, it's a deep belief in the book and in children learning and families growing. All parts of the city, not just one half of the city against the other half of the city. All parts of the city. So there really isn't any words to describe what the mayor and the chancellor are doing right now trying to open schools, collaborating with the Washington Teachers Union, which I don't always agree with. But at the same time, these are your family and your children and your lives. And that is the most important thing at a time of a pandemic. Are we going to play politics over the pandemic? Because there's no symbols. It's a substance right here. There are no symbols that we can tear down. This is substance of what we are doing in the District of Columbia around children and families. And you are going to make a difference. The last thing I have to say is, I don't know how many of you probably have read in the newspaper that I was fired from the District of Columbia Public Schools a number of years ago. Well, the city compensated me about $3 million the first time they fired me. Then they decided they were mad because they had compensated me for $3 million, and they went and fired me again. Illegally, justice is illegal. They made me a millionaire, and then they went and fired me again. This is the craziness of Columbia Public Schools. And you can ask Chancellor Newson Lewis, Google it, and look it up. This is the craziness of the DC public schools. And you have to ask yourself, why? Because the last time I checked, Congress had a lot of questions. The last time I checked, as I said, the city council tried to run DC public schools. So if I'm an expert in education and knowledge all across the country, why is it that the DC City Council wants me to give them billions of dollars for a legal bond? Ask yourself, what is it that they're doing around your children that makes absolutely no sense whatsoever? Points of data is not worth risking your lives. But let me say it again. Points of data, points of data, it's not worth the risk of your lives. Like the only reason you're bringing all of these people back is putting them in the middle of a bad pandemic. Because of a point of data that you do not understand? Or a point of data that makes absolutely no educational sense whatsoever in any universe? So what is it that we're doing in the District of Columbia around kids? What have we been doing for the last 14, 15 years around corporate school white supremacy education? What is it that we're doing in the District of Columbia that makes no absolute sense at all? And the only place you're really going to find justice is in the courts. The only place you're really going to find justice or justice is in the courts. Because the DC City Council makes the changes anytime they want. This is not an absolute. They don't have to do this. They do not have to do this. They choose to do it. Because it's political, it's legal, for whatever reason to them. It makes absolutely no sense to anyone. So that's my piece. My name is Jeff Kennedy. If you're looking for me, YouTube, whatever, you'll find what I've said online and in public now. Thank you.
I have no confidence in the mayor or DMU's leadership, and do not believe they have the authority to be making unilateral decisions about reopening schools. We must be given clear evidence of physical improvements to our schools, real PPEs. Working with staff inside public-based reinsurance facilities and communities from around the circles of opening that the district is not able to afford them. We're not going to cover it, and I am in the middle of my first time on the court. At this stage, I would not formally be sharing this with you. And I intend it to be too early. And as we recently told my school staff, this should be a happy and private time. Instead, I have a bill to tell a health appointment in getting my pregnancy confirmed with a blood test. Also, I can prove my writing to DCPS that I have a full life. As of today, I still don't know if I'm approved for a new day committee. I may have to go back anyway. I don't know. I don't know. But here's something. Pregnancy and COVID-19 puts me and my girls at risk. And I am far from alone. There are eight six other infected mothers in my school. How many of us are sick at high school and adults? And also, lots of women in our city. How many of us are pregnant right now? What does the American College of Resectors and Gynecology suggest infected mothers do to limit exposure at work? Talk with your employer about how you can stay safe while doing your job. Ask if remote work is possible. If remote work is not possible, and you work in a job with a high risk of exposure to COVID-19, ask your employer if you can switch to a remote work. Where are infected mothers included in the draft of staffing assignment paperwork? Or that's a memory. For hybrid instruction release by DCPS? You can go back and read it. It's not included. Not a single word about pregnancy is included. Where is pregnancy mentioned at all? It's not. And that says everything. We must not return in person until it's safe. I can't afford to lose my job, my health insurance, my home. Please stand with me and protect infected mothers like me. And at least six others at my school can turn your night now.
You guys hear me?
No. Be loud!
Can you hear me now?
Hold on, hold on.
Wait, come on, come on, all right? Okay. My name is Rob Herman. I live in Ward Six, and my daughter is a kindergartner and a higher elementary. I'm speaking from the District of Columbia. I'm not a teacher like you guys. Very much for allowing you to be here. I just came out here first off to support you. When you're, it's ridiculous that you're not being able to even testify to the combo, to talk with the combo, to really get your, the opinion and understanding from a teacher perspective. From a parent perspective, I just want to ask, want to ask that you also consider our perspective as parents as against some of the decisions we've taken before in our school over the last couple of years, I guess. For me, one of my largest concerns is actually about the very dynamics of the plan that the mayor has put in place and said that is going to go into place in a couple of weeks. All right. I'm working on it. How about that?
Shout!
Is that better?
You have to talk loud!
All right, all this talk louder. There you go. Okay. One of the best, okay. My biggest concern is about the dynamics of the, of this plan. We are having to say yes, and we're going to do. You have this thing where you're going to appoint some kids in a classroom. You're going to put up to 10 kids per classroom for teacher. And then you got the other bunch who are in the remote learning mall in a classroom. And then you have the kids who are going to stay on the remote learning. And those classrooms, those kids who have been in classrooms, I don't know, 15, 80, 20, and most kids, are going to more than double in size to about 40 kids. Because they're removing teachers from the remote learning where they've had an established relationship, that they've established a relationship over the last month. You have new group of kids, and then a new teacher is going to come on and maybe just like it, or teach a lot of kids. Do you know what that does to the mind of a five-year-old?
Sucks!
What that does, I get it. You know, the little ones are the ones that we want to focus on right here. We've got a lot of kids that are falling behind. We've got kids who are homeless. We've got kids that don't have access to technology. These are real issues, and I agree that they need to be solved. And I know all of you as teachers agree with us too. For those who are able to access the technology, for those who have established that relationship, this plan is going to be so disruptive to not only the teachers, not only the parents, but the kids themselves.
I'm shy of kindergarten teachers like you.
Why we're here. You know, you guys are doing this for money. You guys are doing this for the love of the kids. And that was meant wrong. Getting something you need to some sort of, some sort of, some sort of, um... This is going to be a garbage period. Nothing's yet over all of us. We get it. We're all doing our best. And we're all doing our best to help the kids. The problem with this plan is that it disrupts the teachers such a way that nothing is solvable. It's just for everyone. You're asking away, and that's what I'm really frustrated with as a parent, is that everyone could see this coming. And when I say everyone could see this coming, I mean, everyone could see that there was going to be issues with disruption in technology. Everyone could see that there was going to be issues because kids couldn't access the facilities or whatever. There was some plan put in place. Do they consult the teachers or not? I don't think so. But they try, maybe. But the thing is that, you know, they had from March until August to really put into this plan. My teacher didn't know what was going to happen inside her classroom until the same week that the parents were called, the second to last week before school. When they came back from the break. That's ridiculous. And that's crazy. And so, why should I trust the DC public schools? Why should I trust the mayor?
Shouldn't.
To implement a new progress program that is going to change everybody? And you guys still don't have an idea of whether you're going to be teaching or not, and what you need to know inside this school? That's ridiculous. And so, as you go on and make your negotiations with the, with the DC public schools, as you consider the next step for this year, I just ask that you think about our perspective as parents, particularly the emotional journey that these children have gone through. In March of this past year, I had to tell my kid that, well, it was maybe April, I guess, I had to tell my kid that she was never going to see her pre-K four kids, the kids in her class, ever again. And then, I had to tell her that in, in, in her kindergarten class was going to be through a screen, and she was going to have to be able to interact. She still, to this day, has traumatic incidents of, I want to go back to pre-K four, where it was different and it was better, and I could see her play with my friends. You got to think about the perspective of this from a student's perspective. They can't keep, can't keep changing up everything every month or two months. And you guys are all teachers, and you know this. I know you know this. So I want to say thank you to the teachers for doing the best they can with what they've been given this year. I want to say thank you for being out here and expressing your, I don't know, anger, upset, whatever we want, verb or whatever adjective we want to use here about this ridiculous situation, about how you're not getting your voice at the table of the DCPS, what's going to happen at DCPS. That's all I have to say. And thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Ben Jacob. My name's Ben Jacob, and I'm a special education teacher for the workforce. I have two topics I want to talk about today. Number one. The reason why teachers don't trust DCPS and facilities is because they've done a Band-Aid situation the whole time. Last year, when our HVAC went out, they refused to do anything until parents got involved. They complained about their kids wearing coats inside the classroom. Their solution was a space heater in every classroom. And they told the pre-K teachers, don't let the kids nap under them in case they fall from the ceiling. Let that sink in. That's what DCPS thinks. It's outrageous. And I've heard from people at my school that the HVAC is still not fixed. They're bringing in units to circulate the air that are going to go with the windows. But that also is very loud, and we've had that before, and teachers can't teach over it. So they're not, they're still doing a Band-Aid situation. That's why we don't trust them. So I want to see the trust. Chancellor Kirby is sending us pictures of these filters. That's all gray and dandy, but if there's not a proper airflow, that's going to do nothing. The second thing I want to speak about is for my special education students. Most of them will probably not come back in the classroom compared to don't trust DCPS. They've seen the way they've handled a situation with HVAC unit at our school. And now it really means life or death. Before, it was just a discomfort. Now it's a serious thing, and they're still not taking it seriously. So if you take me away from them to go back in and teach different kids, and then those kids, if you get a new teacher, you're totally disrupting their learning. I just want a plan to not to disrupt districts or schools. That's what I want, okay? And one last note before I get off the stage. I need everybody to really count these council members and the mayor, because last month, this week at the State Board of Education, the deputy mayor had the nerve to say that he's not met a teacher that had a problem with him. I feel like...
They should come out here!
This is right before President Davis spoke. I was like, that's our spokesperson. You're not listening to her. I was like, I don't know what teachers you're listening to, but you're not listening to WQ. Thank you, guys.
What? Laura, we didn't hear you.
Does anyone else want to speak?
We have David Coney and Kristen Hare.
She's calling for more speakers. There's only two left.
Come on, come on, Stephanie, she's got a few more, she's being excited, here we go.
Ms. Mark? All right, I'm a teacher and a parent and I want to go back to school. We all want to go back to school. I don't know anyone who wants to be back in their classroom more than I do. I hate virtual school. I hate computers in general. I hate that students have to stare at screens in schools, let alone, let alone for six hours a day at home. I hate trying to get discussions started while I'm staring at a bunch of circles with initials inside of them. I especially hate that virtual school is working okay for the kids who are actually there and engaged and participating, but I know that there's a huge chunk of my students who are logging on and I see their initials, but they're not really there and they're not learning anything. I hate it. I'm also really, really lucky. I don't have any of the risk factors that make COVID really dangerous. I don't live with anybody that has any of those risk factors either. So if DCPS had talked to us, negotiated with us and the principals and the paraprofessionals, if they had engaged with community members and actually come up with a plan so that those of us who are willing and able to go back could go back, I would have been the first one to sign up, send me back. But instead, I'm here at a protest saying, do not open these buildings because you don't have a plan, all you have is a bunch of pronouncements. You haven't negotiated with anybody. You're trying to force people back into the buildings who are not comfortable with the risk. Every single thing that they've done has been marked by a toxic combination of arrogance and incompetence.
Hear me okay? Yeah. Uh, I've been screaming the same question to a megaphone since like late last summer. It's real simple, not going to go up here long. I want to know if DCPS has calculated a projected casualty rate as a result of its plan to reopen.
Yep.
If either they have and they're not making it public, which is nothing short of evil, or they haven't, then they're responsible. Either way, they're not qualified to make decisions with people's lives on the balance. It's my hope that in this meeting that's happening right now, somebody who represents us is asking that question. And if they're not, we need to look at some of the excellent candidates that are here in the crowd tonight.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. Thank you, Laura, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I want to ask, are schools ready to open?
No.
Are we going to go back before our schools are safe?
No.
Are we going to send our children back before we feel the schools are safe?
No.
Absolutely not. I want to say ditto to everybody who has come before me to speak. I agree with all of you and there's very little that I could add to this conversation that hasn't already been discussed. But I've been scrunching my head over this because I want to know when we're going to have an independent assessment about the safety of our schools. I don't want somebody from buildings and grounds or a contractor or anybody else going down the checklist saying that my school is safe. I want somebody from the medical community to come in, up around and say whether or not we're doing the right thing. So there's one thing. Absolutely. So is it equity? Do you hear a lie about equity and social emotional learning with DCPS? Is it equity when we send children back and some schools are safer than others? Is it good social, social emotional learning when at school without walls, the children have to adjust to their principal being fired because he was trying to keep them safe? As a teacher, I'm an art teacher in DCPS, I service my whole school and as a school without walls parent, I'm twice concerned about the lack of transparency in DCPS. Mayor Bowser has to know, we are all stakeholders.